Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Wyatt Ingle, here. Reister, funds.
President.
De Bell.
Then can I have a motion to approve the agenda, but we're going to move the FFA presentation to the next thing on the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Swap. And all you got to do is not do is go back to court now.
Yeah, we'll move back.
I don't want to sit with your picture away.
Welcome to the local corner cafe in Iowa. I'm Jessica, the store owner. Now today's special is our award-winning burger. It's a simple combination of salt, pepper, and oregano on our handmade patty of certified Angus beef. It is served on a toasted bun with a variety of toppings. It is nothing short of delicious. I guess you could say we're pretty proud of our beef burger, and in Iowa, we're pretty proud of our beef production too. With 3.7 million total head of cattle, we are one of the nine states that have more cattle than people. In fact, in 2013, we were the fourth highest state for cattle on feed. Perhaps that's why around these parts, more and more people are talking about cell cultured meat. It's made by harvesting living cells from a cow and then multiplying those cells in a lab to create muscle tissue. At first, it seemed like just an internet curiosity. After all, in 2013, it was estimated that just half a pound of lab-grown meat would cost over $1 million. Then, in 2013, the first lab-grown hamburger was eaten. It cost $325,000 and just two years to make it. Fast forward two more years, and here we have it, a lab-grown hamburger only costs $11 to make. When did people really take notice of cell cultured meat? I think it's when Tyson and Cargill, two of the largest U.S. food processors, invested in Memphis Meats, a company which intends to grow meat from animal cells. The National Academies of Science estimates that products of cellular agriculture could be in the market within the next five years. Others say it could be as soon as 2021. But as it gets closer to reality, it has become a serious policy issue. Farmers and consumers alike are wondering what it could mean for their business as well as their dinner table. What is cell cultured meat? What are the risks and what are the benefits? How should cell cultured meat be labeled? Should Iowa take the first steps to define what food should be labeled as meat? Today you'll hear from Joseph Colom, our local state senator who feels like Iowa should introduce a bill similar to Missouri that defines meat as any edible portion of livestock or poultry carcass. Jake Geisler is a fourth-generation Iowa farm who raises corn, soybeans, and beef cattle. He's also a member of the Iowa Cattlemen's Beef Association Products Committee. Sam Hansen is with one of the world's largest food processors that also plays a major role in the traditional beef business. They've invested in a cell cultured company because they see its potential to provide substantial protein options. Sarah Hansen, who represents the North American Meat Institute, a trade association that represents all packers and processors of animal proteins. Jessica Carlin is a mom and wife who is 33 and has three kids. She tries to buy foods that are unprocessed and all-natural for her family and is trying to cook more meals at home to save money. Like most Americans, hamburgers are a family favorite. Dylan Danielson is a 25-year-old who is passionate about making choices that are better for the environment. He is less concerned about price and more likely to buy from companies that are socially and environmentally responsible. Cell culture meat will very likely be heading to a grocery store and restaurant near you, but the question is, will anyone bite? We shall see.
Hi Jess, any interesting news in the paper today? Did we break the record for the most smell?
Yeah, I think we may have. Actually, I was just reading the cover story. The headline is, "Should Iowa Be the Next State to Regulate the Word Meat?" The article says that farm groups are pushing to regulate product labels with the term "meat" on them, especially because of new cell cultured meat that make them into market. What is cell cultured meat?
Cell cultured meat begins by taking a number of cells from an animal and proliferating them into a nutrient-rich culture medium to create meat. Although there are some intermediate steps that would need to be taken to figure out how to produce this in large quantities, but by the end, they hope that this meat is harvested, seasoned, cooked, and consumed just like other meat products.
I think I read about this new meat. I think they call it clean meat?
Yes, there have been many names tossed around about what to call it. The reason why they want to call it clean meat is to invoke the feelings among the public as clean energy.
So do you think Iowa should take these steps to regulate the word meat?
We have 200 beef cattle and have a majority of decent markets. But I have coffee with my neighbor who has a 500-head dairy farm. He, like so many others, is suffering from a long and gradual decline in milk prices. There's no denying that the ability of plant-based alternatives to use the word "milk" has hurt the dairy business. I'd like to think if he had supported a law that stopped soy and almond companies from using the word "milk," dairy farmers would fare much better. That is why I take time to serve on the Iowa Cattlemen's Board. Our group supports the use of the term "meat" to describe those products derived from actual animals raised and harvested by farmers.
I agree, Jake. In recent weeks, states like Missouri, Nebraska, and North Dakota are taking matters into their own hands when it comes to cell cultured meat. Farming industry groups in more than a dozen states have persuaded their state legislators that new laws that make it illegal. For example, in Missouri, a plant-based burger sold there cannot be called meat. I think Iowa should do the same.
I heard that Missouri law is being challenged in federal court. Do you think that well-stand?
Well Jake, due to the unique nature of cell cultured meat, it is difficult to know how the U.S. regulatory system will play out.
Whatever the product is called, I think it's important the labels are clear so I know what product to feed my family.
I agree with you. It's very important how these novel products are labeled. If the same terminology is used for two very different products, consumers need to know the necessary information to differentiate between the two and make a choice.
Why would large meat packers in the U.S. invest in cell cultured meat?
Worldwide meat consumption is expected to increase by 73% over the next 30 years. This product will help meet this need in an environmentally friendly way. It's really not that different from regular meat. The main component is animal cells, which is exactly the same as conventional meat.
Meat grown in labs sounds unnatural to me. I do not think I'd buy it for my family.
Really? Because I like meat, but I think it'd be better for the environment not to harvest animals. Are you finding that most consumers are willing to try it? Michigan State University conducted their Food Literacy and Engagement Poll in 2018. They surveyed more than 2,100 Americans. They asked, "How likely would you be to buy a product that looks and tastes identical to meat but is based on ingredients that have been produced artificially?" They intentionally didn't use words like "cultured meat" and "lab-grown meat" to avoid influencing them on a particular term. The surveys found that 18- to 29-year-olds were five times more likely to purchase this than those consumers 55 and older. They also found that there was a gender difference too, with 43% of men saying they would try it and just 24% of women. They also found that college graduates were substantially more likely to purchase than non-graduates. I'm surprised more people aren't willing to try it because the way we mass produce meat today is a threat to the environment, public health, and animals. I'm also concerned about how we use antibiotics and how it can lead to antibiotic resistance.
Most proponents of cell cultured meat focus on the potential environmental benefits of cutting emissions and of course, less land use. However, limited research has been done on the potential impacts on a large-scale production of lab-grown and plant-based products.
So how will cell cultured meat be regulated from a food safety standpoint?
Recently, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration and the U.S. Department of Agriculture said they will share their oversight. The FDA will focus on rating the collection, baking, and growing of the cells used to make artificial meat. The USDA will focus on the production side of it and of course, overseeing the labeling.
It's important to understand there are real consequences to choosing cell cultured meat. Some people think it's an environmental solution, however, most land used for grazing cattle is already unsuitable for other agricultural purposes anyway. Some people want to get rid of animal agriculture altogether, however, no lab product should ever take the place of the American producer.
I fear the widespread use of cell cultured meat will hurt our rural economy. If they can get a meat product to be produced in a lab so inexpensive, then it outcompetes what our Cattlemen can do, we will lose cattle production and all the supporting jobs that go with it. The animal ag and meat industry employs millions of people. Potentially, this could have major consequences across the economic and production spectrum.
Not only do we get meat from cows, but also many byproducts too. Consideration must be given to this wide range of products, which would also have to be replaced. Well, 64% of the cow is used for meat, another 35 used for byproducts including leather, medicine, and more.
I'll be inviting our local legislators and the public to a listen and learn meeting on this topic next Tuesday evening at the VFW. You are all invited to attend. I'd like to speak on behalf of my company at this meeting. It sounds like a good opportunity to update the public on why we're looking to broaden our exposure to innovative, new ways of producing protein. I want people to know that we will continue to invest significantly in our traditional meat business as well as looking for new ways to give our consumers more options.
I would like to speak as well.
Sure, I'll put you both on the agenda.
I'll be sure to attend. It's important that as a cow producer, we protect our livelihood and make sure that the inspection and labeling process is fair. We need a level playing field.
I still feel like much more needs to be known about the science of cell cultured meat. What does it really take to produce it? Are they using any antibiotics to make it? Is it nutriously the same as regular meat?
And I'd like to know the carbon footprint.
Excellent. Please come and invite your neighbors too.
While all agree that cell cultured meat is likely coming, a lot of questions and concerns still exist. Many from the group agree to meet at a public listen and learn session next Tuesday. But how will it turn out? Will states be able to legislate how the product is labeled? Will consumers be willing to take a bite of cell cultured meat? No doubt, 2019 will be a key year for policy related to cell cultured meat.
If you have any questions, feel free to shoot questions at them.
So if you guys took a poll right now, yes or no? Does anyone want cell cultured meat?
I don't want it, but I'd try it.
I think trying it, yeah, but it's probably different compared to like what actual meat is.
Do you think we should redo the Missouri and North Dakota thing?
Um, I mean, maybe, but like you have to get like everyone's opinion on it before like you would like really do anything because a lot of people like older would be opposed to it because they've been growing up with regular meat, like their natural meat their whole lives.
What do you find the impact on things like nutrition, availability to low to moderate income people? How would this impact the market overall? Do you think it would help or hurt access to protein and good food products for people?
Mark Post, the creator of cell cultured meat, said that it is almost equally nutritional, the same as our beef that we have now. He said that this protein can be produced faster and can be provided to like third-world countries that don't have enough protein. So that's his goal, that's his set, but it's starting to become popular like in America and stuff, and so more companies in California are investing in this and are trying to get this on the market for cell cultured meat. It's not available to the public yet, so we don't really know how people will react to it yet. So it's, we don't know yet. Yeah, but more companies are pushing towards it to happen for like the FDA to approve it and the USDA to approve it, and then the Iowa Cattlemen's Association are trying to push it back because they don't want it to come.
And how will this impact corn growers in Iowa?
No, I mean, that'll impact them a lot because all the corn that they make in themselves feed cattle and then not only that, but the cattle farmers will lose their jobs and many lines of people that know what to do.
And they have to feed the corn to the lab?
No, they don't feed it to the lab, they'll feed it to cows.
Yeah, but what do you feed the lab-grown beef?
Oh.
Corn, right?
Yeah.
Oh, seriously?
You do? Really?
Absolutely. You grind it up and you make glucose product and inject it.
You do a wonderful job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good work. When is state?
Yeah, when is it?
April 15.
15.
15.
Good job, guys.
Good job. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
We're fine, we'll get it, don't worry about it.
We really make the way we kill it good.
We got it.
I'll get it.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Go buy another cart.
Thank you very much.
He thought there was something to buy or something, but it was just something about, yeah, he told me, he thought it was coming back through to you on the commercial, which they didn't, but it's coming through to our sixes.
I'm surprised he didn't say something about not having another public hearing, but we already have a public hearing.
He was fine as well.
Anything removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I was going to ask about this Bob Dieter deal.
What?
The Bob Dieter payment.
Association.
Progress.
Thank you.
Is that, didn't we approve $10,000 total? $5,000 from us, $5,000 from HMU? Or did we end up, did we go above that on another, on another resolution?
Yeah, we added another.
This is the whole amount, we'll get reimbursed from HMU.
On the ground.
Okay.
Offered for half of that.
But yeah, we did approve another $10,000 total. So 20 total?
Yes.
Okay.
For the comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Goal-setting update, I'll go ahead and read through these, you've got a copy in front of you. And this is since the last update I gave from the goal-setting, when did we do that? Three years ago? Two years ago?
Two.
Infrastructure, streets need repair, we're working on applying action to come up with which ones and prioritize them. Infiltration, flow issues, we're meeting with the MS4 Coordinator who happens to be coming in and doing audits on April 30th. We're putting together policies that meet their needs. City operations facility, aging fleet of equipment. We did get a new dump truck purchase, it was a used one, but new to us. We've got a new sander purchased this last winter, thank goodness we had that. And then we're working on the vehicle purchase schedule to get that updated, so we've got something to work off of. Maintaining certification requirements of employees, we're still, we're continuing to work on those, they're getting their Level Ones, we're working on some getting Level Twos for the water.
I think they are more certified than I've ever seen this employee group, which is a great thing for all of them, between building inspector all the way down to everyone in our Public Works Department. So kudos to them for taking that by the head and wanting to continue to learn things, so.
Economic development, no, finance budget, increased tax base, that's been constant working for us.
Right.
If we get stuff that goes, we got increased tax space. Opportunity to apply for more grants to assist with accomplishing our projects and goals if resources available within the community for local match and assist with grant writing. Grant idea list has been updated, Chrissy keeps that supplied to the Black Hawk Gaming. We also applied from, Chrissy found that one from Wellmark for the Eldorado Sidewalk, hopefully we'll hear from that this fall.
Yeah, it'd be September.
So we're continuing to work on grant opportunities. Thanks to Kate for all your help on splash pad and stuff. Economic development, we have commercial development down the 63 corridor and some other businesses are expanding, remodeling their locations. Housing, residential development, Upper Ridge is three additions being discussed, nothing formalized on that. Twin Oaks is developing compared to the last time we had that update with three houses nearing completion. Hopefully they'll get some dry spring to continue to do their dirt work out there. And no word on Prairie Ridge's status from the last addition since last fall when I last conversed with him. Ongoing commitments and obligations, Highway 63 underpass, the bid was let on that in 2018 December. Project will begin in August 2019 and be completed within 50 days, and we're hoping for only a 10-day closure of B2 around 63. Most of the work will be done in the right of way before they close and put it strictly in. Continue economic development programs, we're updating comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance in either 2019 or 2020, we'll have that information for you, we'll have proposals from Intercog at the next council meeting.
October 11.
Or 8th, whatever that is.
8th, yeah.
New priority programs, policies, initiatives, updating city hall including technology and security, we migrated Neptune to the cloud, no longer our responsibility to have that backed up. Opened up more space for the laser fish to be installed, we're to archive city records timely and easier, and Police Department's got a new server being installed any day now for their one that was having problems. Organizational effectiveness, continue to maintain effective relationships with the school district, Chamber Commerce, Fire and Animals Department, other community organizations, just to stay in good discussion points with them. Ongoing relationships with all of those. Review, update organizational chart based on future of the city, that'll be done sometime this year, 2019. Backside issue, develop city-wide capital improvements, equipment replacement plan, possibly get that done in 2019, we're working towards that this fall. Review financial reporting and budgeting processes, that's ongoing. We've had some new policies passed on based upon audit findings, which you're all aware of. Look into conducting strategic planning, plan will be updated in 2019 or 2020 along with a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, and one of those was updated 10 years ago and the other one was posted 20 years ago, so those are all, those are coming from Intercog to review at the next council meeting, and we'll hopefully by that time, we'll have some timeframes on which will be done in priority, so. Those are your updates. We've been staying active, not gotten everything done we wanted to, but got more than nothing. Lola, Hudson Daves.
Hello, Lola. Hello. Nice to see you.
This is my annual visit.
Put your hand out.
The committee, yeah, exactly, but the committee has discussed how much you guys do help, you know, behind the scenes, the road blocking, the staffing, it's very appreciative, so. Also, if you can give us some money, we too, we'd appreciate it. We are having the Brazilian twins this year, so rocking the rainforest.
Me too.
Yeah, we've already talked to Chief Marsh about making sure that if we need extra security, we haven't really had any problems in the past, but he's aware that there will probably be more people coming from outside of Hudson Daves because these guys are good.
I think Danielle Carter said we had like 18 hits yesterday, or last year on Facebook, and we've had over 8,000 this year.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, a lot of interest it seems like, and we're thinking from all over, so that would be good, and we might need more garbage. We kind of talked about that too, but we've got more food vendors, the car show, you know, increases to grow, so that brings in more people too.
We'll be having that in the next couple of weeks.
It's awesome.
So you figure out how far that is going to work, can you stretch it?
I gotta get all the.
How many more roads do we need?
I gotta get all the guys back from Arizona and Florida from the Snowbirds that planned this car show before we can get all that planning done, so. Are they not there? No, end of April or end of March usually, so.
Well, the splash pad will be open by then too, so we'll have additional draw for that.
We wondered about that. I was going to ask, so that is supposed to be open?
Yes.
Before Hudson Daves?
Yeah, we'll talk about that here in the second after Lola's done, but yes, it will be open operation.
Okay, now I'll take that back.
But we'll make sure we work with the Public Works Department, including Public Safety, and kind of keep on track and make sure, because Chris being on New Thor.
He's been to Hudson Daves, he knows.
So we'll keep on top, and I suppose any financial contribution will be appreciated. What have we done in the past?
2500.
Yes.
So, Wendy, we normally have council action on that in the next couple of months?
Yeah, we'll have, it'll be on just your normal accounts payable the next meeting, so.
So when I have a little budget, if anybody wants to see what we've gotten so far, I don't know, I brought some copies.
Sure.
Yeah?
I'd love to see them.
So when are we going to make a motion?
No, we're not tonight.
But how long have we been given in the same level?
So when you say accounts paid, what if you consent agenda?
Yeah, it'd be a consent agenda item. That's how we've done it. Do you know how, the last five years?
How many years we've just been at that same 2500?
If you'd like, we can put it as a separate agenda item.
I would prefer that we put it as a separate agenda item.
Let's have it so we have some discussion on what we'd like to do, and that, so we'll get that on next month's agenda.
I'll tell you.
Right in the next week, we have a discussion.
We did lose HMU last year too, so they were a big donor, and they chose not to donate last year, which now I can kind of fly and understand, but FYI.
Do you know how much they gave?
They gave us, I think, a thousand.
Okay.
So that kind of hurt, but yet we're still doing good with the business donations. Everybody's very generous too, so we appreciate it. We're trying to make it better every year and.
Are they having the, still having the metal recycling?
Yes, and that's being very.
And the popping of the cans too.
And the can redemption, which is amazing.
Cans are full right now, just in case Jesse cares.
Again? It was empty last Monday.
I just dropped them off too.
Yeah, no, that's been bringing in $1,000 a quarter.
Super, that's good.
I knew that was going to be an idea.
So yeah, any other questions or?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you guys again.
Thanks.
Yeah, appreciate your time too.
Committee reports, Public Works Meeting of March 13th. Scott?
Yes, we met at 7:00, had some discussion on UTV. We are now kind of scrapping that, looking at used tractor to fulfill the needs that we have up at the ballpark. Sewer adjustment at 110 County View, Country View, and then we discussed the dale-drive flooding, which we basically determined that we will continue to use pumps to mitigate that issue. And then we talked about the diffuser and the need to get that permitted in Alphabet Jared, 746.
Thanks Scott. Any questions for Scott? Thank you.
Can I give a quick update on the splash pad in between here?
Sure.
So just as an FYI to everyone, the installers that are from Nebraska were here two weeks ago, right, two weeks ago?
Yep.
Yes. Unfortunately, I was not able to meet with them, but Chrissy was able to step in and take care of that, and I appreciate it very much on her part. They met with Tom Peterson from Hudson Hardware Plumbing and Heating, Dave Chapman from Chapman Electric, and the installers, as well as Chris was there from the city, and I think, was Rick there too?
Yep.
And Rick was there, and Chrissy as well, so everybody was able to talk about where they need to be on the same page. Installation is slated to begin from the Nebraska installers by May 1st, which means that Tom and Dave Chapman and everybody will have everything else ready those last couple of weeks in April, which is fantastic news. Big shout-out to Chapman Electric, they are donating all of their services to get the electric over from where it's currently at to a splash pad, so that's a huge donation from them as well, so we really appreciate that, but that means it should only take them a few days, or from what I understand, the installation guys from Nebraska, don't take real long to get this thing put in and up. So by Memorial Day, we should definitely have a working, functioning splash pad, so we will work with the city as well as the chamber and other people to set up like a ribbon cutting when it's open, so look forward to that. But just wanted to give the council an update because I know it's been a big dollar amount from us, so thank you, thank you for all of that. We are still collecting Randall's receipts through April 15th, and then that's when we're going to cut those off, so everybody knows that, and I'll put something out on Facebook about that, but thank you to everyone for all their donations and. So where are we at with the money? Are we? We are over the amount that needs to be raised. We are good right now, and looking at adding some benches and potentially a sidewalk from where the current sidewalk is in the park over to the pad, which we hadn't talked about to begin with, so that'll be a nice thing. The installers said they can just do that right at the same time and make it together, which would be awesome, so.
As well as the fence at any point in time?
We do have a, I have money in for a fence.
Oh, okay.
I just need to find a fence installer that'll call me back because apparently. But thank you to everyone for all their donations and...
So where are we at with the money?
Are we... We are over the amount that needs to be raised. We are good right now. And looking at adding some benches and potentially a sidewalk from where the current sidewalk is in the park over to the pad which we hadn't talked about to begin with, so that'll be a nice thing. The installers said they can just do that right at the same time and make it together, which would be awesome, so.
As well as the fence at any point in time?
We do have a, I have money in for a fence.
Oh, do you? Okay.
I just need to find a fence installer that'll call me back because apparently winter is not the main time that fence installers work a whole lot, so. I don't know why, but so if one of them will get back to me, that would be great. But yes, we've got signage, we've got benches ordered for inside. Thank you to, what's the company in Janesville? Kay?
Kay.
Kay in Janesville, they're gonna...
Kay Media.
They're giving us a nice little discount as the city too for producing the benches that are gonna be installed and some stuff in there, so. It'll be awesome.
I did have some, just for general information, I had government class at Hudson sent me five emails on different topics. Must have been one of their government projects, and three of them talked about needing, wanting a swimming pool and the fact that it'd be a lot better than a splash pad because a splash pad would only be for kids, so. And also the fact that since our fundraising is really going slow, all they were looking at was the GoFundMe page with an $8,000, so I was able to inform all of them through my responses that it's been fully funded and I gave them a few opinions on swimming pools, so.
Huge thank you to the Black Hawk County Gaming Association because they were $77,150, so we love them.
Hey, General Government. Item A, discussion action to approve Resolution 2464, a resolution to set a public hearing to approve the request of Robert Byer for approval of the Byer Minor subdivision. This is simply setting the public hearing for April 8th. So move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Reece, Angell, Wyatt, Isabel. But man, you were Johnny on the side.
This is the longest meeting we've had in a long time.
Uh, yeah. Informational items, you got three of them there. Reminder items, some regular scheduled meetings are held here at City Hall. Public Safety Committee meeting, March 28th at 4:00 PM. Public Works, April 10th at 7:00 AM. Mayor's Task Force, April 16th at 5:00 PM. Personal Admin Finance Committee meeting, April 22nd at 4:45 PM. Next council meeting is April 8th and April 26th at 6:00 PM. Move adjourned. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.